Sure, sure, sure. Is anyone sitting here?
No.
Oh, I get the big chair. I get the big chair today.
Testing, testing.
Yeah, that's why I just talked.
Okay. How you doing?
Alright, we're not ready to start. Okay. Here, make sure your microphone. When you talk?
I'm gonna start probably really pressing most of our...
Yeah, yeah.
I told the other members.
Down to the microphone.
Some more I think about.
So you want to make this the quickest meeting that we've ever had in life. Just, I'm just holding you.
Test, can you one two three? This is fine. Our system is down tonight, so it's crazy. Yes.
Test, test, test.
What's your game? Can you shift your microphone? What's your game? Can you shift your microphone?
Testing, testing. Yeah, I hope.
We'll share, I'll share with you.
Okay, Eddie? I'm gonna start it now. I'm gonna restart it. Yeah, see, it's coming out. Testing, testing. Yes. I have a little something missing about the sound for him. It's gonna come from here. Okay.
Nice, here, right here. I actually got you a mic.
Alright, let me start it. Wait, destination path only two minutes. It's not working.
Not yet?
No.
Pause.
It's not working. See it right here?
Stand your hips up when you're ready.
Okay, I will. Thank you. You see?
One, later, pick a point all of a sudden.
It says it's going, but it's not.
I'll be quiet. Me and you?
Yes. You're not sick, are you?
No, I'm good. Thank you. Testing, testing.
Does this work also? No?
It works for streaming. It works for streaming, so that's why you need to speak into both.
I got it.
But this still does not work.
Same video, start.
It's not working.
And remember on the dais, these microphones are live, so be careful what you say.
It's not. Yeah, it does. It has to go to an amplifier and then one of them comes back out. Um, Eddie's getting ready to check it. It's not there.
Do we have to press this?
Basically however, regardless of it, you have to have the wrong line that I gave you. It has to go to the amplifier. But it has to come back from there to this box.
Pretty light agenda, a lot of people.
And sound.
Go for it.
It's basically saying that the plant is unreachable. Yeah.
That would be, that would be awful.
Yeah, that's that. That's what that is. Yeah.
Preface tonight, before we get into the public speaks, if we could...
You can.
Make our comments as short as possible. Try to make things move quickly. Appreciate it. I know people have a lot to say. Interesting comments. I'm trying not to shut it down too fast.
I'm sorry. We're gonna try. I'll see if it does. I gotta restart. As soon as I restart, it will be, it will be fine.
Is that you driving down the beach? Joe Gregbes? I was walking by, dog.
Morning?
I think it was. Yeah. Were you going through the sand, see if it goes through your pool or dry?
There's not a lot of cars that color.
Yeah, I know. It was really still sand. I mean, the last couple of days, I haven't seen so much sand.
It was bad. It was bad. Are we up Samantha? How are you?
It's still so insane. I'm just trying to go ahead and use that and hopefully they pick up whatever. Almost.
Oh, that's meant by sharing.
Yeah, well, no, no, no. I have to speak into the mic. Alright, go right.
Come on, you can report the commission meeting for March the 7th, 2017. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Battle?
Here.
Commissioner Gantz?
Here.
Commissioner Miller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Rosenzweig?
Here.
Mayor Rob?
Excuse the absence. Sit tonight here with me. At this time, call for a vote of silence and pledge allegiance. I place the flag, hand it up hard, for all the veterans. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do you see good? The approval to see commission minutes?
Motion to approve, motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May I present on motion, now to the city board minutes?
We have an addenda.
I'm sorry?
Acknowledge the board, city board minutes.
It just, it made much to acknowledge.
Okay, second?
Second.
And that's up to the CRA and the re-advisory board for the minutes.
Show you now, it's show approved by affirmation.
Acclamation. Now approval of the city commission agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with an addendum. Number seven.
Second.
Appointment of a special...
What's the, what's the addenda?
Appointment of a special master with item number seven.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The man on the side. At this point, obviously to be heard, and as I said, try to make it brief.
Reed and Massey, 19th Avenue. I don't, is this on?
No. It's not working. Use the microphone.
Reed and Massey, 19th Avenue. I would like to commend the city, but most of all, the employees of the city for the fabulous job they did after Pioneer Day, Founder's Day, Crackers Day, whatever you want to call it. Monday morning, when I was out on the beach on my tricycle, there wasn't one cigarette butt on that beach, so I want to commend you all. Thank you so much.
Any others wish to speak?
Justin Oderbump, here.
Name and address of the record.
David Cohen, Woodman Deerfield Beach for about four years, on Sixth Southeast Sixth Street. I came here to say positive things only. We have a biennial, quadriennial, and a nocturnal, nocturnal, hot biennial? Is that what you want? How's this? I have to move it in here. Okay. I'm gonna start with the oldest one, Mr. Gads.
That's only in reference to being on the commission.
That's correct.
Just checking.
You're not forgotten. We have watched you as a kid coming in here, preparing yourself for a dozen years or more, volunteering, 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 learning, studying, learning, studying, preparing. And then we watched with eight years of service, as you've done this thing. Through all that time, you have expressed, made decisions, and they have been decisions based on your careful study and experience, not the random opinions of people who are uninformed or who will misinform you. Through all of this, even though I'm not always agreed with you, at our times, never have I had any cause to doubt your integrity. And as to you, Joe Miller, same deal. Only you had a rocky start, and you had a learning curve like all the newbies, but you got through it. You found who you were, told those guys to get lost, stayed with your ethics, and now we have had here a collegial environment. You have an opinion, he has opinion, and you discuss them and argue them as adults. This is what we have wanted. Some people are taking exception to the word unite. Yes, united as a team with, or several teams, with opposing sides who aren't gonna duke it out, but as it was in earlier days, in my middle years and early years, there were times when congressmen would shout and yell at each other sometimes, but then they'd go out to dinner after it. One side, the other, they would find a way. They would have a discussion. No sunshine law violated. They'd have a discussion about, well, what we give and what do you want me to give you, and so on and so on, and then it would be publicly discussed thereafter. And then we come to Mr. Rosenzweig. You've been said to be steady and have a big heart, but more than that, Mr. Rosenzweig, you have a conscience. You have high, high principles and a strong sense of ethics. As a matter of fact, really odd, your sleep was disturbed when you did the wrong vote because you felt you weren't informed. May I go on, please? Because, because I have something great to say also about each of you.
I understand.
And then I'll be done. Just another two minutes.
I can't give you and then somebody else not, so, right now, three minutes later on, we'll see how things go, but right now, I gotta get more people up here. Thank you.
I have to say, Ms. Battle, though.
Yes.
I have to say, that she has also set a standard here of, shall we say, adult self-control, under stress. Uh, and I will hope to continue. Thank you. And I also want to say something that I have said privately to Mayor Rob that I would like to say in public. Shall I turn it off?
Thank you.
Turn it off.
Leave it on.
Leave it on.
Any others wish to speak?
Change benefit, 533 Northwest 34th. There's a song saying, "It's a shame that you rest around every day. It's a shame that you don't tell the truth every day." But what I'm here to say about, my concern is the voting. The stopping of voting at AO 11 precinct, the Palms. I asked the last time, why did they do it? Who decided on it? The young lady said it was a commissary thing. There's only one person can do that. Nobody told me yet. Brenda Snatch didn't know anything about it. Dr. German didn't know anything about it. Who did that? Who decided for us not to vote anymore? We got people in wheelchairs, can't walk. The necessity of getting places, they can't do that. They used to keep the elevator come down, vote and go back upstairs. The only thing I can see, and I might be wrong if I don't know, God forgive me, it's a plot to determine our votes. The people in District AO 11 precinct. You wanna mess their minds up so they won't vote? I asked last week, why couldn't this change be made after the election? Nobody said anything. The place is not under construction. Why did they change it? They want to control the vote. Be fair. Let people vote where they've been voted. The place, if you win, you win. If you lose, you lose. He's got a lot of things against you, even the press, newspaper. That's why I changed my subscription. I canceled my subscription. Because they're putting stuff that's not true and they won't put a retraction. I don't know who's paying who, but somebody didn't pay already. But you know what? This is wrong. Here it is, 2017, and we're going back to the 40s. We're not afraid anymore. The white sheets are going out now. Everybody got a white sheet. Y'all need to stop it, whoever doing this. With these racist tactics, take them back where you come from. And I mean that. I didn't go to see you to fight for, for freedom and come back here and have, and have mine denied. No, I didn't. Some of you don't know how to smooth.
Thank you. Is this the way to look at and find out what happened with that? Because I thought our friend Snatch would have done it, but that's the friend Snatch stuff you know about. I'd like to know why that, why that precinct changed. That certainly smacks of discrimination as far as I'm concerned.
Vice Mayor Rosenzweig, if you make comments like that, you know, I, I would be careful because number one, it was moved from a facility that is a private residential facility to an open, accessible city facility. There's nobody trying to hide any votes or prevent anyone from voting or anything like that. This is just once again, trying to create some issue that's not there.
Well, that's true, but have we informed the voters in that area where they don't know?
Yes, yes, this went through the proper...
Channels?
Channels or processes with the supervisor of elections.
Thank you, Christine.
Before you close that, were there any other precincts changed?
Yeah, I believe St. Ambrose was changed. And quite frankly, this probably should have been changed years ago.
Ms. Jackson?
Hi, how you doing?
Good, you?
Sandra Jackson, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Um, I want to speak on behalf of the Palms also because a lot of resident, still was not... Okay, a lot of resident was not aware that the precinct was closed. I was over there last week with help and trying to get some of that absentee ballots. Um, my understanding that someone did a request, trying to find out why the precinct was closed, and they got an email from the city stating that it was done because the director for Housing Authority wanted to be changed, and my understanding that's not true. Okay, because I spoke to someone in the directory of the Housing Authority. She never requested that. Far as St. Ambrose, Ms. Battle, that was requested by the minister there, well, the priest there, that was, that was done. So I guess a lot of people's concern why now is being changed, and a lot of people's wondering why they already don't have the trust in our commission right now. So you guys need to really check into that. It's a bad time that you guys change there.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Kathy Maggie, 125 Southwest 34th Avenue, West Deerfield. The passion everyone has really needs to be directed on March 14th, not just Election Day, but the day that the FDOT chose to have their first kickoff meeting for Southwest 10th Street. I guess they're supposed to have another one, but why they chose to do...
If I can correct you, it's not about Sawgrass. That's for I-95 Express Lane coming north from Commercial Boulevard up into Hillsborough. It's not about Southwest 10th Street. I spoke with Mr. Roberto about that too, because I told him it wasn't good to have that particular meeting on, on election night. And at this point, he said it was in concrete, he couldn't change it, but for those people who want to have a, attend of having a change, he will give us another time and another thing and redo that at another location, so. It is not about Sawgrass extension.
Okay. Still a major traffic issue? Still having it from 5:30 to 7:30 in the major voting timeframe that we as a city would be voting? I don't know.
I gotta try to get a change. He said we can, but we will have another hearing. I have that from him personally, so that'll be taken care of.
Okay. And to everyone on the dais, whether you're here the next meeting or not, thank you for your service.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. At a recent mayoral forum, three of the four mayoral candidates allowed time from their presentation to answer questions from the audience. One candidate, our District Four Commissioner, chose to not take any questions from the audience, which was allowed under the rules of the forum. However, there are many questions that the citizens of Deerfield Beach would like to have had the opportunity to ask, and I have compiled some of them to ask now. Number one, in the employment contract between the City of Deerfield Beach and Burgess Hansen dated September 2010, it states Mr. Hanson is to be reviewed annually. Is it true that Mr. Hanson has never been reviewed, and if so, why has Mr. Hanson never been reviewed? Two, what reasons can you share with the citizens of Deerfield Beach for why you voted to pay Mr. Sweetapple, Mr. Gold, and Mr. Speckler $1.7 million in 2016 for six small slivers of beachfront property when there were no other entities wishing to buy that property now or in the future at any price? Why did you not work with Mr. Sweetapple when he came in front of this commission in 2014 to possibly work out a settlement or compromise? Why was an additional $168,000 spent on legal fees when the only tangible benefit the city received from this wonderful legal advice was not having to pay the $1.7 million all at once, but instead pay it out over four years? Number three, if the 2017 budget is so transparent, why was the fact that all employees who took a 5% pay cut in 2012 and then received it all back in the 2017 budget not disclosed anywhere in the budget? Four, why do you allow the city manager and finance director to keep on using a 95% collection rate on properties taxes instead of the 98% collection rate that the audited financial statements reveal is the actual average amount collected over the last 10 years? This extra $1.1 million per year is dumped into the general reserve instead of being earmarked for something like increasing employee salaries or lowering the milledgerate for all Deerfield Beach taxpayers? Five, according to Sunset News Deerfield Beach reporter Ann Geggus, only three new buildings have been built in District Two's Dixie Highway corridor in the last 15 years. Let's see, that equals an average of one new building every five years. Why is that number so low? So there remains a lot of unanswered questions that the citizens have only one week before the mayoral election. Of course, I know none of these questions will receive answers because it is very apparent that District Four Commissioner's strategy is to keep his mouth shut, not take a stand on anything controversial, and let his name recognition carry him into office. I hope the voters of Deerfield Beach are smart enough to elect someone who will answer the citizens' questions.
Anyone else? Name and address of the record, please.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. My name is, my name is Alex Benefield, 261 Southwest 11th Street, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Currently the chairman of the Deerfield Packer Rattlers. Um, there was a press release, release the other day stating that the Deerfield Packer Rattlers and the Deerfield Bisons had came to an agreement and merged and came together. That's not true. There was no agreement made with the Deerfield Bisons and the Deerfield Packer Rattlers. Now, the Deerfield Packer Rattlers are willing to sit down with the, with the city manager, commission, Ms. Battle, and come up with an agreement or try to find out what do we need to do so that we're able to play on our fields once again. As far as a negotiation being made where the Bisons and the Deerfield Packer Rattlers have joined, that's not true.
Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Ken Wayne, 807 Southeast 9th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. I want to briefly talk about code enforcement. Going door to door, many residents have complained about the way code enforcers have talked to Deerfield Beach citizens in enforcing the code. The mission of code enforcement is to uphold and enforce codes and standards established by Deerfield Beach to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of all residents. They must strive to perform their duties in a fair, professional, and courteous manner while providing information to the public in an effort to maintain our community's highest quality of living. But it may not be their fault. The commission and city manager should provide the leadership and monitoring their activities with a follow-up on all citations to the citizens. Privatizing code enforcement to save money is one thing. I would like to see proper guidelines and an appeal process for the citizens. I personally feel this is an obligation of both the city manager and the commission. Thank you. Thank you.
Just to the record, there is a magistrate when they go before it's incited to state their case, state their claims, and get to hearing from the magistrate and handle it. We should get that one handled. Maybe other issues need to be addressed, but that's, I do know that for a fact.
Well, in, in going door to door, some of the citizens, especially the elderly, seem to be intimidated by the $90 a day fines and they, they just do the, they cut down their trees or whatever they have to do and they don't go through the process. And I believe it's just the way they're handling it to the public and their mannerism and talking to the public and trying to work with the public. This is the problem of code enforcement. I mean, I could sit here and, and talk to about 10 different cases of what has happened, but I just feel that there should be more moderate monitoring on the half of the city manager and the commission. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Tyrone Fieldport, 523 Northwest 3rd Way, Deerfield Beach, Florida. Just to back up Alex a little bit in regards to the Packer Rattlers. I know he is not, for some reason, seen in the best eyes by the city, but I know for a fact that the parents and coaches almost unanimously are on board with what he just said. They are not in agreeance with what's being presented. And my concern, you know, I read the press release, I think it was Saturday morning. I was put off by it, a little disappointed because I thought, you know, maybe there was some truth to it. I am concerned that a community with, built, an organization built with community leaders, with people from our community who are concerned about their children cannot get a seat at the table. I would like to just ask whoever it is, the powers that be, to give us a chance to negotiate. I think our organization is strong, it's historical. We just want to talk to you and nothing against the McDougals. I grew up with Stocker and Jerome right down the street. We just want to be treated equitably and fair. All right, so we just would like a chance to reach out and have that conversation. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Public hearing?
Tarnavis Anderson, 748 North Deerfield Avenue. I am a former board member of the Deerfield Beach Packer Rattlers. So I'm not going to sit here and say we didn't meet with the city. We did speak on the behalf of Deerfield Beach Rattlers and we didn't get, come in and agree. So the article was, so the article was not like setting, we didn't make no deal on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? If none, put in the public hearing.
Sherman Morris, 1260 Southwest 5th Avenue, Deerfield Beach. Commission, Vice Mayor. An old African proverb says, if you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. A year ago, we had an opportunity to discuss the change. We had an opportunity to discuss the Bisons. We asked them for an opportunity to sit down. We're told by the city manager, they don't work for the Packer Rattlers. I encouraged him or communicated with him that we are residents of Deerfield Beach and so in fact you do work for us. The idea that we can't sit down and discuss what we want as a community is a problem. I know that there's concerns as it relates to the Packer Rattlers. Concerned citizens for three years prior to that were working with the Packer Rattlers and working in good faith with Ryan in order to resolve those issues. And then all of a sudden, as in the midst of resolving those issues, it's snatching underneath us. It's not fair, it's not right. Last year, that group overcame a lot. They were able to put together a group of kids and win a championship. It shows that the community has, community is supporting Deerfield Beach Packer Rattlers. And we're just simply asking that there are concerns, if there are issues, let's sit down and let's discuss it. I'm sure we can resolve those issues, but again, 41 years of history and tradition and a group of individuals that want to chart their own path, I think is fair. The idea that they overcame last year shows again that the community is behind the Packer Rattlers. And we just ask that the, the commissioner and, and the city manager, any representatives will sit down and have a conversation so that we can resolve whatever issues or concerns you would have so we can get the Rattlers back on the field and have our kids playing right back here in Deerfield.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Bernie Parnes, 3074 Harwood F., Deerfield Beach. I don't like being misquoted and coming from the mayor's desk was an article in the paper from Century Village, The Reporter, which misstated my view on the Packer Rattlers. I have said to both sides, anybody who'd listen, I would have done it differently. I would sit both sides down with the commission, with the city manager, taking the both from best and thinking of the kids. Having said that, the Packer Rattlers is not the only problem in District Two.
Thank you.
There are too many other problems that need to be solved. So let us sit down, let us try to resolve this for everybody's satisfaction and move on because District Two needs a lot of work that this commission needs to do. Thank you.
Anyone else? If none, put in the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Do we have on the agenda?
Yeah, well, another one.
You're sorry? Yes, sir.
Name is Galen Adderley. Galen Adderley, 1251 Southwest 10th Terrace, Deerfield Beach. Well, I just came up here to say, I notice a lot of things going on, but at the same time, we was talking with the McDougal Foundation. Nothing was settled, nothing was in writing or whatever, so, because my main thing, I want everything to be right for the Packer Rattlers. I say nothing was settled, nothing was in writing, but at the same time, we want, we're talking for everything to go right for the Packer Rattlers, so that was it. But I mean, that's all we want to happen. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
Christopher Smith, 228 Southwest 5th Court, Deerfield. Just to go off what Galen said, we were in negotiation with the McDougal Foundation. We were just trying to come up with something that would benefit our kids and get them back where they're supposed to be. Nothing was finalized, but we were in negotiations with them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Last call.
Demetrius Givens, 1150 Southwest 7th Avenue, Deerfield Beach, Florida. What's going on here is a transition of power. There is negotiation with the McDougal Family Foundation to restore the history and the legacy of the Packer Rattlers. We came to a couple agreements and the press release was released a little earlier before things was actually finalized. There is no problem with the McDougal Family Foundation with working within the bylaws that was established to keep the Packer Rattlers in the city of Deerfield. So what needs to happen is there's a transition of power that has to happen from the old regime of DPR to the new regime so everyone can be happy. Now, if we will have a power struggle, we will still be fighting. So it is not a commission issue anymore. It is an internal issue in our own community. So I don't want, as, as a representative of the city of Deerfield, Mr. Fieldport did say he don't have a problem with the foundation, but we have an internal issue that I think is men, we need to sit down, come to, and women, I'm sorry, come to agreement that can work for everyone because if we want to keep kids in the city of Deerfield playing for the Packer Rattlers, there are rules and regulations that we all must abide by. Again, the foundation did not come for this. I said that on day one and I'm going to say it again. These negotiation deals have been hindered by power transitions and ego struggles. So I'm just asking that if we're going to sit down and talk, let's be open to the community. Let's be truthful because the, the city of Deerfield has opened up all opportunities for the kids to turn, to come back to the city of Deerfield and play football. Thank you.
Public hearing is finally closed. The next, the next item number one is a quasi judicial hearing. The applicant here for, what is his ocean resort, HLC. Jack, do you wish to waive the quasi judicial proceeding?
Is there a presentation by the city?
Well, maybe, I don't, you, are you?
I just, I'd like to say a couple things, I mean.
Well, you're waiving the quasi judicial proceeding.
Right.
And you need to, yes.
Yes.
Is there anyone who's going to testify on this matter? The testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, the husband of the truth, they have your God, okay?
Yes.
If you win, Jack, now you can make your personal case.
It's an existing facility that my client bought at the end of 2015. It is operated as a hotel for 40 something years probably, although it technically isn't legally a hotel. It's a transient apartment, so my client just wants to clean up the license on it. We're not increasing the building any, we're improving the landscape, we're improving the aesthetics of the building and improving the interiors of the, of the building as well as it's going to be fire sprinkled from here on out. So I think it's a good thing and it shouldn't be any issues, I don't think, but you tell me. I think, is there any questions?
Is there anyone from the public?
Reed and Massey, Reed and Massey, 19th Avenue, is it?
I've got the mic.
I have it in my hand.
You have the microphone?
I do. I am. Is it going to continue to be a hotel or you're going to change it into something else? Or if it's not a hotel, a residence, whatever you're calling it, you're going to change it into another kind of facility?
No, it's been operating as a hotel and if you go by the signage on the outside says hotel, but technically speaking, as far as the city's concerned, I believe it's a transient apartment. I believe technically speaking, it's a transient apartment, but it's been operated as a hotel for 45, 50 years, whatever. So this is just a little something that came up, you know, during the transfer of the, of the property from one owner to the other. So yes, it's going to be an upgraded hotel extended stay.
Anybody else who wants to speak? Public hearing? Need a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, any, any conversation from any commissioners? None? Just one question I have. The residents who are there now, are there residents in there now? Will they continue to be, be living there as well?
I, I really don't know. I can't, you know, speak on that. I mean, that would be up to them.
Not, not evicting?
No, 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 not at all. I mean, during the construction, they may have to, yeah, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of construction there. I mean, there's a big improvement, so it may be difficult for them to stay there at that point. But that's a little ways off. We haven't got a permit, you know? So there's no, yeah, we're not looking to evict anybody, so.
Thank you. Motion second? Any discussion? None? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion definitely passed. Now the consent agenda, any poll?
Public, to be heard?
Public hearing.
Public hearing?
What, you know, what's, is there any polls first? Any polls from the consent agenda? There are no polls? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on anything on the consent agenda?
Wait a minute, we got a public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm the head.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, I'm trying to open up messing things up. An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Deerfield Beach amending section 6676 to include Sullivan Park parking area, amending section 6677 to include four hour maximum free parking for the Sullivan Park parking lot and to include docking fees for boat lifts at Sullivan Park. Park dock of $5 per hour, four hour maximum. Providing for inclusion, the city code providing for accessibility providing for an effective date. Anyone in the audience wish to speak?
Dan Hirsch, 330 Southeast 19th Avenue. I stopped by Sullivan Park last weekend and it is beautiful and very unique. Already, many but not all of the parking spaces were taken. When it comes to beach area parking, I live in reality and not a make believe world. I have owned beach area property for over 16 years and I know full well what happens on nice weather beach weekends. People drive around for sometimes over a half hour looking for a parking spot. The reason I know this is because they tell me this when I let them park at my property. In addition, all you have to do is look at the parade of people parking at the Cove Shopping Center and marching over the bridge. Commissioner Miller lives right in this area and I'm sure he can corroborate what I am saying. How long does the city of Deerfield Beach think it will take for people to discover another 40-plus free parking spaces even closer to the beach than the Cove? And does anyone truly think the four hour maximum parking will be a deterrent? People will adjust and make sure to limit their beach outings to under four hours and save the $16 that four hours of beach parking would have cost if they could have even found a metered parking space to begin with? Why is the concept of making users of our beautiful beach pay for the privilege of using it such an outrageous concept to the city? Doesn't it cost taxpayer dollars to maintain the beach? Now, I, some, I know some will say the city does not charge to park at any of the other city parks. However, as far as I know, this is the only city park that will ever be built only two blocks from the beach. Now, I admit it is very easy to point out problems, but much harder to find solutions. However, I will give you a solution to this problem. The city should run parking at Sullivan Park just like it does at the main beach parking lot. Assign parking spaces for the exclusive use of the citizens of Deerfield Beach with a beach parking sticker. That way they know there will be a parking spot available for them no matter what. The rest of the spots will be available to collect parking revenue from the people who are using the spots to go to the beach. And while we are talking about the beach parking stickers, let's make them affordable to all so that no one can say, I can't afford to take my child to the new park. One of the candidates running for mayor, Ken Wayne, has proposed that if he is elected, he will lower the beach parking sticker to $25 per year instead of its current price of $100 per year. I hope no one plans on making the argument that the city of Deerfield Beach cannot afford the resulting $127,000 loss of beach parking sticker revenue in a budget of over $100 million. Thank you.
James Benifil, 533 Northwest 3rd Way. As for the parking, that tower they put up there only means one thing. The beach people can park there, walk up the tower, cross the bridge, cross the bridge to the beach. It's going to be more beach parking at the park than parking. Why did they build the tower there? They want people to park over there and walk up the tower and cross the bridge. You know, you're damned if you do and you're damned if you don't. Yes, I want you to do, no, I don't. You're giving them an easy access to use it as beach parking and not as park parking. Who ever thought that was? You're a smart person, real smart. I wouldn't want to build a house for me.
Pamela Lottelow, 84 Southeast 19th Avenue. I think the park is beautiful. Let's give it a chance. My goodness, I've heard so many people just looking at ways to complain about this new beautiful park. Give it a chance. The commission discussed the parking and said, let's try this and see if it works. So give it a chance. My goodness, we've got something beautiful there. Give it a chance. It's only, what, a week old?
Anyone else? Public hearing, discussion from the dais. Appreciate the hands, you push your button? Yeah, are we, are we building on that one right now?
We have, we need a motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a motion? I'm going to make a motion to approve. Before we do, just address a couple of things. I think the point that was made tonight is right. You're damned if you do, damned if you don't. We had lengthy discussions on this and we went round and round about it. A lot of the people who spoke here tonight, were here that night, actually didn't make a comment about it or offer their opinion on it when the time was there when we were making this decision. It is a new facility. We have limitations to what we're able to do.
So again, you're damned if you do, damned if you don't. So you take the opportunity that you have, see if the plan works, and I think it will probably work best. You're not gonna find a stop-all solution that's gonna prevent everybody from abusing the system. That's gonna happen. There have been a lot of questions that people have asked, why are there bastions that prevent the use of the full parking lot over there? And that reason is because that is part of the agreement, because the section of land over there is an easement, and the agreement in order to use that easement and develop on it was that it would only be used for special events. We're gonna have to see how that holds up, but that is the reason why these bastions are there, it's not a limit for the city to try to prevent people from going there. If you talk to the residents over at Hillsborough Landing, they liked the solution that we came up with, they think it's fair, and most of the residents do think it's fair. You talk about beach sticker parking, let's go back in time and remember the arguments that got us to the price tag of one-twenty-five. It's because we had one of our colleagues and some of the other commissioners here who were trying to eliminate beach sticker parking for the residents, they didn't want to lose the revenue that the beach meters provided. We fought, and part of the compromise was, we'll raise the price so we can address these great revenue issue that everyone was talking about. But we did that, and now they wanna turn around and say, "Well, gosh, we really should have lowered it." Well, we were fighting just to maintain it, because there was a huge threat to eliminate it entirely. And here's the problem with the beach stickers on that. If you were to put the beach sticker spots over in Sullivan Park, or lower them to this price that has been talked about, you're gonna create a situation in which you have more demand than you have supply. We already have that now, we have plenty of people that complained that have bought the sticker and paid the one-twenty-five for it, that says, "There's not enough spaces for me to be able to park even when I want to and I paid for the sticker, it's not right." How many people do you think you're gonna get? And let's go back to a few years ago, when we gave it more, when the price was originally going to go up, and we held off and we waited a year, we had a gold rush, we had everybody lined up here for the week that we sold it at that reduced price, or the original price of the fifty dollars. We had a lot of people lined up to use, to buy that sticker. People had never bought the sticker before just because they knew the price was gonna go up. Now it's gonna go down, you're gonna have people come in, buy the droves to buy it, and they're not gonna be able to really do the license, we don't have enough spaces. Again, damned if you do, damned if you don't. So I hear these offered up suggestions, and having been here and known the history of it, we know exactly what the problem is, it's the best solution that we have. So my motion is to approve.
Do you have a second?
I will sec, I will second it, and just a discussion, I was for the, for the metering of the, of that parking lot, but after the course of our discussion, and knowing that, like Pam said, we'll give it some time to see how it works out, I agree with the majority of the commission, and I am seconding the motion.
Further discussion? It's come to my attention that some of the voters have suggested that we should do the same thing with the docking fees, and I don't know how the commission would feel about amendment to that, does that bear any...
No.
I have one more suggestion.
Pardon?
I have another suggestion.
Okay.
I just wanna make sure, as the city manager, we are gonna have the monitors saying we have to register your license plate, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we can at least regulate the four hours and the rest.
Okay. All the questions, roll call.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes.
Commissioner Gans?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rosenzweig?
Yes. If the record shows that we announced approval, no consent agenda. Any others who can... No consent agenda?
Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on a consent agenda?
Number seven, that should be on the...
I'm sorry?
No, no one from the public, a motion, we just need a motion.
We added, plus number seven.
Yeah, that's already been added.
Okay.
Just need a motion on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
As unanimous, we go on to comments. Any other comments?
No, I have none.
None. Commissioner Miller?
Yeah, in reference to, it was commented before, this weekend, the winds, I think, pushed more sand onto the Ocean Way and the grass area, and all the way to the sidewalks on the west side of Ocean Way, possibly more than I've ever seen. And our staff were working, I go down there Monday, they're still working on it Tuesday, they're doing a great job, but, and those new screens to help prevent it, they look good, I thought they were gonna work better, but the wind was so strong it knocked houses down, wherever it knocked it down, it was like a snowdrift of sand. Holy mackerel, we need to continue to look for ways to hold it back, 'cause this time of year, my, we spent a lot of money on overtime and the rest and with the sand, so I compliment your staff, and they were working so diligently with a smile on their face, but it was a lot of work. So if we can even keep on working to improve the barrier, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll certainly continue to research it, but I do not believe we've used any overtime to clean up.
Oh, good. You know what, I just assumed that, they work it so much.
Just regular hours.
Regular, well, they're very efficient. One more thing, in the Cove Shopping Center, I just wanna say publicly, I've observed, as we made the big improvement a number of years ago, that the lines that divide the parking spaces are almost transparent at this time. I don't know if it's in this budget, but if it's not, let's get it next budget. In addition to that, we repaved much of the city, except where I live. And when you make a right on Southeast 19th Avenue, we've got construction on the corner, and we've got this construction on Second Street, right by the improved Ocean Reef that we're gonna fix up. If we can put money to, in the next budget to do those roads too, they've got a lot of wear and tear with this construction, and a lot of potholes.
Yeah, we'll be coming forward with a work plan in the upcoming budget year for not only that area, but other areas that were not in the...
Yeah, like Hidden Harbor.
Work plan a few years ago.
Thank you.
Commissioner Battle?
Yes, sir. We're having a lot of issues, and I've been in contact with Code, and, you know, a lot of people like to be down on Code, but when I see that we still have eighteen-wheelers parking in the neighborhoods, tearing up our streets, that concerns me. Nightly, they park over by Deerfield Beach High School, they're still parking there, we need to do something about that, you put in those do not, even where the do not park signs are, we're still having a problem with that. And the people on, just across from the high school that abuts the Seventh Day Adventist Church are having the same problem with parking, although there are no parking signs there, they could continue to park there. And normally, I don't speak from the day as to things that people from the audience bring up, but I feel tonight that I need, do need to let the gentleman know that, because he brought up something about Dixie Highway. We are feverishly working on Dixie Highway, we have an RFP that's out to get the residents in that area to come up with a vision plan for Dixie Highway. What you might not know, sir, is that a lot of that property is owned by families that have lived here since Deerfield was built, and they don't want just anything coming on Dixie Highway. So all of that talk about putting in this, that, and the other, we're waiting on the residents, or we're working with the residents to come up with a vision plan for Dixie Highway, something not only that we can be proud of, but something that will bring money into or increase the economic development of that particular community. Thank you.
Commissioner Gans?
Yes, I do want staff to work with FDOT and the MPO to really address this issue with scheduling these meetings. They do a good job of really trying to shaft us, in my opinion, whether it be holding a meeting outside of the vicinity of where the actual project's going to be, much like they did with the Turnpike and Tenth Street, and having that out in Parkland that was outside the scope of the project, and now holding this meeting here on the very day that we're having our citywide election. It's not right, they need to be more sensitive to it, and they actually need to work with staff, so if staff can address that and work with FDOT and MPO, that would be great.
Yes, Commissioner Gans, just to follow up on that, I do have a meeting set up with the District Four Secretary, Jerry O'Reilly, about that, along with a few other issues that FDOT has not communicated well with the city on. And I know that Commissioner Battle's also been discussing it with MPO, with the executive director and her colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. I do wanna thank the city manager, Tom Good, and staff as well for adding the reflectors to Forty-Fifth Avenue over in the harbors and gates there, the area to the west portion, northwest portion of the city of Deerfield Beach, as well as along Sixth Street, we have some winding roads there. You can't put in traffic home there because of the circumstances, Palo Road, lines, but one of the things that the residents have requested, the reflectors, very aggressive on that, Tom, you got that taken care of, by the way, and they look great, and the residents are very happy, so good job on that, appreciate that. This is my last meeting, full meeting, as the District Four Commissioner after eight years. I wanna thank the entire staff from the city of Deerfield Beach for everything through the years, they've been phenomenal. It has been an honor and a privilege, and Samantha, as much as I love having you there, it is a great omission not to have a Hettie Graham Johnson sitting there after all these years. I think about the people that were there eight years ago, and all the changes that we've gone through. I appreciate everything, the city manager, you've been phenomenal, I really thank you for taking the personal attacks that you have, that I think have been disgusting, and handling yourself with grace, doing an outstanding job for the city of Deerfield Beach. But I, I see my former colleague Peggy Nolan, our former mayor, in the audience, all of you who I sit up here with now, Commissioner Valley, you and I dealt with each other back when you were commissioner many years ago. Thank you, it has been an honor and a privilege. And Joe, it's been eight years together up here, we've been through a lot, I really appreciate it, I appreciate the fact that you've allowed me to debate you heavily, and you have helped against me personally, so with that, I appreciate that, and all of you. And most importantly, I'd like to thank the residents of Deerfield Beach, and the citizens of District Four in particular, for their support, their comments, commentary, critiques, and assistance, and love for eight years. So it has been an honor and a privilege, and I thank you very much.
And I can second that, I've been here for four years, this is my last full meeting as District Three Commissioner, running for reelection. Again, I wanna thank the city, the staff, I can't tell you, this has been such a tremendous experience for me, I never expected to be able to become elected official and actually go stand up and face an audience and work hard for the residents of Century Village and the city of Deerfield. There's no public event I have not attended and loved doing it, event on the beach, can I get a chance to get down there, but I'm gonna event. I always interview the people down there, and the vendors as well, to find out how they like the event, are they coming back? Invariably, these people have been coming to Deerfield for many years, many of them for fourteen, fifteen years, come back every year. This Deerfield Beach, they like the beach, they like the residents, they like what's here. And I'm just astounded, you know, when I hear this, you know, I'm so pleased, and give my card, say, "Come back, call me," you know, and I hope that, you know, they'll do that. And again, I have to thank my wife, Verona, for the many years of support of me not being home, and out on the road between big cities and the state of Broward, going to Tallahassee, going over to Orlando for meetings and so forth. It's been a real pleasure, I have really grown in this position, I really thank those people, Kathy and Bernie who put me here, I can't tell you thank you enough for this experience, which will last a lifetime, no matter what the results are on Tuesday. And I wish everybody well, and again, thank the staff, I'm pleased and proud of what's gone on with the building department and the toll enforcement over the first year they've been here, we're seeing great changes and things happening in the city because of it, there's electrification going on, and regardless of the outcome on Tuesday, we're working with Tom Good and others in the public departments, going in Bonneville, locking other areas of my district that really need a lot of improvement, the residents there are asking to be part of our city, and be part of what we're doing. And one of my goals is to get our zip code down there changed to a Deerfield zip code instead of Pompano Beach, you know, this is Deerfield now, and they know it's Deerfield. In fact, they even went to the point in the green road to have a deer established on that, on that corner to say Deerfield. And it's gratifying that we're reaching out to them and they're responding back. And again, everybody, commissioners on the dice, it's been a real pleasure sitting here with you and counsel, I know I've dealt with you a lot of times with issues, and I thank you for your advice, it's always been good, and I basically follow most of it. Burgess, I'm glad you're feeling better, I don't see the spleen tonight, I'm glad you're coming along. And Commissioner Gans, having sat next to you, Commissioner, it's been a tremendous learning experience, I've picked up a lot from you, and it's all been good, it's all been good. And thank you, everybody that's here tonight, and those more here tonight.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
One, one other thing.
Sure.
I would be remiss if I did not say that this is Women's History Month, and to, I ask you to come out on March twenty-fifth and help us celebrate. We're doing something new this year, we're recognizing one woman from each of the four districts. Please come out and celebrate with us on March twenty-fifth. It's a luncheon, and we'll be at the Taftner Center at Alita McKeeville Park. Thank you.
And we owe all of them, I am particularly, to the women sitting in Deerfield Beach, they've been incredible supportive to me and helping me, and very good, thank you for reminding us of the women's role and that women come forward. I forgot the name of the movie, Uncounted or something, with one's, the space program, getting fingers, incredibly, stop and think about what they did in that issue, in that area at that time, it's just amazing, I'm glad they unload that story. And again, thank you all very much, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This is my mayor. I know I'm out of order, please accept my apology, I'm very sorry, but can we say a least thank you to the mayor? Because this is her last...
Yes, that's true.
Could we say thank you to Jeanine for her time of service?
Yes, actually, for her service to the community as well, and sorry she wasn't here tonight, I know her health has been, has been an issue with her, and I'm certainly the same for her, and that she recovered fully from the disease that she's fighting. Thank you, Commissioner, for that.
Make way. Make way.
Thank you.